We call this meeting to order of the City Council on April 11, 2023. We welcome all of you here, City Council tonight. And we have Reverend Andy Buckhannon is here, is going to lead us in our invocation. And afterwards, Mr. Buckhannon, Reverend Buckhannon, oh yes, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you so much. After Reverend Buckhannon lead us in our invocation, we're going to ask that you stand for our pledge allegiance as well.
Let us pray. God, we praise you for your power, your authority, your sovereignty in our lives. We're thankful for your grace and your mercy and your provision for all the things that we seek to do. God, we thank you for our council members, ask you to bless them as they lead us and guide us in service, Lord. We're thankful for their leadership and what you're doing through them. God, we're thankful for our city and ask you to continue to bless us and watch over us. Give you all praise and glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. We're going to have at this time the swearing in of our Fire Chief, Mr. Willie Bradfield, and our Police Chief, Garrus Five Ash, our attorney, Mr. Jeff Todd. Chief Bradfield, if you'll join me up front and any family that's willing or motivated to join you is welcome too. One paper. Please raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of Fire Chief of the City of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God. I do.
Congratulations. Next, I'll call Chief Five Ash and any of his family members that would like to join him. Please raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of Police Chief of the City of LaGrange to the best of my skill and ability and as to me shall seem to be in the best interest and welfare of the city without fear, favor, or affection, so help me God. I swear.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. We're going to ask this time if Mr. Bradfield or Mr. Five Ash or if either of them have any comments they'd like to make at this time, they are free to do some.
First of all, just want to, as I always say, I want to thank God for this opportunity. My mom always taught me to put God first in everything that I do because without him nothing, none of this would be possible. Second of all, I want to thank my wife and my family for all the support that they had given me, you know, throughout this process. Special thanks to the mayor, the City Council, and the City Manager for just believing in me in leading the LaGrange Fire Department. And then I want to thank the LaGrange Fire Department. We have some awesome men and women that work for the LaGrange Fire Department. We want to thank them for all their support and all that they do each and every day, you know, putting their lives on the line to serve and protect citizens of the LaGrange Fire Department, so thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to kind of reiterate what I said at the press conference of today. I don't know how many of you saw it. Can't believe the weapon that we have gotten from the community. Everybody's been over backwards nights to us. My wife, my daughter are sitting up here with me today. Many thanks to them for their support. This is actually the first time they've ever been to LaGrange, so it's a little too late to back out now, so they're still with us. But it means a lot for Dale, for everybody, for all the guys and ladies from the Police Department to be able to support me, all the people from the Fire Department, Mayor, the whole City Council. Just couldn't be any more thankful for the weapon that we've gotten. And I assure you, you'll get 110% from it every day, so thank you and it's great to be here.
I'd like to take this opportunity to applaud our Fire Chief and our Police Chief. I think it may be the first time in history that we've ever had to hire two at the same time, but we're thankful for you as we certainly do support our Fire Department and we certainly do support our Police Department. Thanks to all of you for your hard work. I want to take this opportunity to also thank Dale Jackson. I just left Dale Jackson. Thank you so much, Dale Strickland, for all your hard work. I realize that some of you just came for the swearing in, so if you all want to exit quietly, you can do so before we start our meeting. All right, if y'all could close the doors, so we can begin our meeting. Thank you all so much. Lot of excitement. Now we get our approval of our minutes of our regular council session held on March 28th.
Motion to approve, second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close by the same side, ayes, headed so carried. Have no employee recognition. Public hearing to receive comments on board of planning and zoning's appeal to recommendation to annex and rezon property located in the 1700 block of West Point Road.
Mr. Mayor, this was properly advertised. We would take any comments at this time.
Anyone who wants to address the council on this particular subject. Hearing none? We declare that public hearing closed. Okay. Delegations, Ms. Tabitha Covington with Communities and Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You sent away all my potential volunteers. First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and speak as I do annually. Thank you for the city and the council's continued support of communities and schools. I'm very proud of the impact that my staff has made and the community has made on our students. As you can see, our results are good. They can always be better. That's the perfectionist in me. But we continue to serve our students, engage our parents. Each year, we outperform the years before. The results you see only cover the five schools that I have a site coordinator in. However, we've also served students and parents at the following schools in addition. Hollis Hand, Elkhite, Franklin Forest, Clearview and Callaway, Clearview, Callaway Elementary and High School, and also Troup High School. So on there, on here, it says we served about 2,500 students and reality is closer to 3,200 students and families in Troup County. This year, with the five people I have on staff, we're serving their case managing over 500 students and we're serving closer to 4,000 students right now. Some updates, six counties across Georgia, we joined together to write a grant at the federal level for what's called a full-service community school grant. It's for counties that serve rural communities. We received a grant, CIS of Georgia, and this grant will be divided among six counties. We're the only entity in the state of Georgia to receive this grant in the amount of $15 million. It's a five-year grant for $15 million. It's the largest single allocation to CIS of Georgia in our history. It was also the second-largest allocation across the nation for this money. Kentucky was the only one that got more than we did at $40,000, $40 million, I'm sorry, $40 million. With that, I am able, and along with some money from the school system, I'm able to move into three additional schools. So I'll be hiring three new site coordinators and then a program coordinator because, of course, we're growing and right now I'm a team of one, so I'll have some support. Then we have another entity to come in and give $165 million to CIS National. So we're applying for those funds and with that, I'll be able to expand into a fourth school. So some updates, we've entered into a partnership with the Vile Group. Mental health is a huge issue for our students and so we will be working with Dr. Vile to help provide mental health services to additional students in some non-traditional ways. We'll be doing virtual counseling, group counseling, and those things. Let's see, what else? I talked about the Ballmer Group. They've joined the cause and donated $165 million to CIS National. I'll be working with the Servant Scholars at LaGrange College to provide services to our kids. There was a partnership developed by former past mayor Jeff Lukin and Patty Youngblood. We have two huge new initiatives, thanks to my site coordinator Stephanie Williams at LaGrange High School. We're doing what's called Bus Stop Parent Cafes. One of the big things our schools talk about is getting our parents to come to the school on behalf of their students. If they can't come to us, we are taking the parent cafes to them. So our site coordinators, our community partners, we go into the community. When the kids get off the bus, the parents meet them. They have resources available for them at the bus stop. So if anybody has, you know, resources and you want to come out, we'll share those dates with you and you can come out. Or if you just want to come out and hang out, we have snacks and music. And the second initiative is called Monday Mentoring and Motivation. I think I wrote that down right. I gave you a flyer. And what it is, again, we have students who don't have that caring adult in their life. A lot of our programs require that students be able to have transportation to get to them. If they don't have that, we're bringing, you know, it's what our name says, Communities and Schools. So we're bringing the community into the school. There's a QR code, you can sign up. It's every Monday and it's from 7:45 to 8:15 where you spend time with the student, mentoring that student. So again, if we can't get the students to the mentors, we're going to bring them to the students. Let's see, we had an awesome summer camp last year and we're getting ready to kick off our, prepare for our summer camp. One of the big, one of the highlights of our summer camp last year, we took the youngest group of students ever to the Wellstar Development Center during the summer. And so one of the things I like to brag about is when our kids went back to school this past year, when that question was asked, what did you do for the summer? Our kids didn't say we went to the beach. Our kids said we learned how to intubate a patient. So that's what we're trying to do, expose the kids to things that they would never see. We serve a lot of kids during the summer when we go places. It's their first time leaving Troup County, so we want to make sure they see more than, you know, the box that they've put themselves in because we try to explain that the sky's the limit for them, no matter where, you know, what their circumstances are right Even with all the great work that we do, there's still a lot to be done. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and you can talk amongst yourselves when I'm gone, but we've been approached multiple times about doing an after-school program. And my desire is to have an office for CIS for my staff because I have to hire all these new people. I don't have anywhere to put them. We've outgrown our space at Defex and it's not conducive to, you know, tutoring or mentoring. No offense to the Department of Family and Children's Services, they do great stuff, but the people we work with don't want to come to Defex. It's just not the environment for kids and families to come for a positive experience. But my desire is to have an office and then sort of a drop-in center for our kids where they can come to get help with their homework, mentoring, games, exercise, tutoring, they can grab a snack, or just cool off, sit in a corner, read a book, listen to their music, even take a nap in peace because so many of our kids go home and peace is the one thing that they can't find. And if I could give them a space to even do that, it would be ideal. Families can come in, they can take a class, parenting class, they can apply for jobs, they can do a load of laundry while they're doing that. They can get resume help, food if they need it, just a safe space. Like I said, I don't have room for the people I'm hiring, but one of the things I looked at was Matthew 7:7. It says, "Asking it will be given to you; seeking it will find; knocking it will be open for you." So I'm believing that for communities and schools. The final thing is the one thing that we don't like to talk about and it's necessary because it affects the community, but it affects us because over the last couple of years, you know, we've seen the gun violence and a lot of those are our kids on either side of it. The one that was injured or lost their lives or the one, or the young man or whoever that pulled the trigger, you know, we had contact with that person or we should have had contact with that person across the nation. And it's not just a LaGrange or Troup County thing. Communities and schools has put together a sort of a task force and it's going to call on the site coordinators from Georgia to DC, from, you know, Chicago all the way out to our affiliates in Los Angeles to get together and talk about what's going on in our communities, what they're doing, what they're seeing, and how we can band together and help our communities. It's got to be a group effort and so we want to be a part of the solution as well. So that's, I know on Sunday, which was Easter Sunday, my daughter was leaving my mom's house and, you know, relatively safe, but just in her travels, you know, she called me frantic and said, "Mom, I just saw a young man, you know, get shot." And I was like, you know, turn around, go the other way. So my daughter is 26, but still, you know, I was ready to get in my car and go and, you know, find my child. And so I can't imagine, I don't want to imagine what these moms and families are feeling like. So anything that CIS can do to intervene, you know, to help not just the kids but the parents as well, because we can help the kids all day, but if we don't support the parents as well, everything that we're doing is almost for nothing. You know, there are a lot of great programs, but like I found they're saying, you know, programs don't change children, it's relationships that do. And that's what we're about, building relationships and finding people in the community to help us build those relationships with these kids. That's why we, you know, we're out there early in the morning. Sometimes we do Champions on Duty, 7 o'clock, 32 degrees, just to tell these kids good morning because nobody said it before they left home. So, you know, that's our mission in life, to surround students with a community of support and that's what we want to continue to be for our kids. If you look at our results, like I said, they were good. Almost 80% improved their academics and these are kids who were failing at least two or more classes. 75% improved behavior. We're talking about 10, you know, kids that were suspended 10 times during the previous year, spent the majority of their year in ISS or at Hope Academy. 63% improved attendance and we're not talking about two or three days, we're talking 10, 15. Sometimes kids who missed a month of school improved their attendance. 98% of our kids were promoted. This year, they brought back eight and a half grades. So some of our kids who weren't quite ready to go to high school, they did go to eight and a half, but they've transitioned now in the second semester onto the high school. 97% of our kids stayed, well, closer to 98% of our kids stayed in school and 100% of our seniors that we served last year graduated and graduated on time. So what we do works. It just, you know, we just need the support of the council, the community, anybody else who can, who can get on board and see what we do. I mean, we have the infrastructure there. We just need the support of the entire community. And so that's all that I have today. I have a contractor at my house who's on week four of a four-day project, so as soon as I leave, you know, as soon as I finish, I'm leaving to go meet him. But my site coordinators who are here, always here in full force supporting, they'll be here with flyers if people want to sign up or have questions. My information is on there as well. You know, I use my personal cell phone number on everything I do. That's how invested I am in what I do. November, I celebrated 10 years with CIS. Never had a job anywhere that I worked 10 straight years, so this is more than a job for me, it's a passion and a habit to be. So anybody have any questions?
I just want to say this, Ms. Covington, you always bring a very interesting report to us and you bring facts. And so I want to thank you and your staff for proven facts because you're helping children and that mean a lot. And anything that I can do as mayor of the city, I'd be more than happy to do that. I just applaud you and your staff. Thank you all, just keep up the great work.
Thank you.
I would like to say real quick, it's probably one of the only experienced guys to be on this panel that has operated an after-school program for the last past 10 years. When it comes to tutoring, there is a huge need for it.
It is.
You have an infrastructure, you have funding, you have the right people in place, you just need a little bit more help to do those other things that you need to do. Here to tell you, I stand with you today. Thank you for all your hard work and what you're doing.
I've been on the council for six years and I am impressed by communities and schools. In fact, you guys inspire me. I'm just going to tell you, you guys really are the epitome of dedication, you guys. You know, my children were served by you, my grandchildren, and I thank you for all that you have done and all that you're doing. And I, for one, I think that you're not asking for enough for what you do. And I've never said that about anybody that's coming forward to this council, but if anybody deserves it, you guys deserve it. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Keep being amazing, keep being amazing.
Thank you.
You know, I have a good relationship with a lot of your coordinators.
You do.
I see a couple out there right now. I love y'all, you know, y'all are like family and every time we see each other, it's all love. So if I can be of any support to y'all, please let me know. You know what I mean, from the bottom of my heart, keep pushing and it's only going to be greater and greater and greater and greater. So God sees all.
Thank you.
One last thing, I heard you say something about partnership. What's yours, your star, LaGrange Time Authority? You guys make a powerhouse. So I want to see if I can make that happen, pull you guys together. Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Delegations, right now, Mrs. Iris Euphor. And I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Just take that microphone down.
Euphor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good afternoon. I'm Iris Euphor. I'm going to read it from this so I can stay within the timeframe. I'm here to discuss various issues in my community. Several of them have been resolved, but I still want my voice to be heard. No one should have to go through months of calling city officials in order to have residential issues settled. I hope my experience will make city officials aware of the difficulties residents may be having and put in place corrective measures to prevent future occurrences. On January 26, Officer Cummins from the Codes Department was contacted regarding a bunch of trash thrown on my property. He then referred this matter to another officer. However, the trash was not cleaned up until April 6. Prior to April 6, Ms. Sue Alstine, City Manager Office, Lieutenant Butler, Codes Manager, and City Councilor member, Mr. Nathan Gaskin, were contacted to fix these issues, but to no avail. In addition to the trash, PCA Liquor Store, which is next door to me, grass was way over a foot tall. PCA Liquor Store also went under construction almost two years ago, but the damaged silk fencing remains up and the sand and gravel used in the building process are still in the yard. The silk fencing repeatedly falls on my side and the rain washes the sand down to my driveway where it stays and makes it hard for me to get in and out with the wheelchair. If it rains, the sand becomes muddy and exiting the yard is not possible. In addition to that, PCA's property, there is, on PCA's property, there is a car wash where men gather throughout the day. Sometimes when the weather is warm, they are there until 12 and 1 a.m. The police were called out several times, but nothing changed. It has been almost two years since I sat and relaxed in my backyard because these men can be found drinking alcohol, littering, loitering, cursing, and speaking loud at the top of their voices. A few of the cars they wash have loud-based speakers, which is annoying and vibrates my house windows as they allow the music to play. Sometimes I want to go out for fresh air, but when the front door is open, it is the pungent smell of them smoking marijuana that hits me. The most disrespectful and gross behavior happens when I am in the back attending to my garden. The men with no regard to my presence pull out their penis and urinate in the bushes that are faced in my direction. It sickens me every time. Why should I or anyone else have to go through such lengths, energy, and stress for simple ordinance to be followed? Currently, due to very much needed assistance of City Council member, Mr. Quay Body, my surrounding environment is much more peaceful, cleaner, and presentable. The trash is picked up, PCA's over-foot-long grass is cut, and the men in the back are fewer and more quiet. However, the lack of a restroom for the workers at the car wash remains a problem. And PCA has to be made accountable for adhering to city And PCA has to be made accountable for adhering to city codes and rules. The silk fencing should be fixed and all removed, and the sand and the gravel cleaned up. While I do have your attention, I must shed light and bring honor to Officer Cummins, who has always been professional and very helpful. Officer Cummins, Lieutenant Butler, and their coworkers came together from the goodness of their heart and built a sidewalk in front of my house. It is designed to make things safer for me and is enjoyed by the residents on the block. In conclusion, although many weeks have passed and several calls were repeatedly made, I am thankful for the current basic cleanup that I request. I desire a peaceful, safe, and clean community, and will advocate for that when needed. And before I say thanks for my time, I want to speak from my heart. Basically, I'm in this wheelchair, there's not very much places that I could go. I should be able to go to my backyard, to plant a garden in peace without these men back here, without people having their grass grown. So, in that, I close, and I say, "Thanks for your time and your assistance in advance."
Thank you so much, Ms. Euphor. And we met this morning with the code enforcement, and they gave us a report on everything that you have mentioned tonight. And I want to applaud you for coming tonight, and because if you want a good community, you have to speak up.
Thanks.
And fight for your community.
Starts with us.
So, we applaud you for coming tonight. Don't think that we're not trying to do something about it and not going to do anything about it. The car wash, understand, they've been contacted about the problems that you have incurred there. Also, the trash, they've already contacted us and given us some pictures. We have some before and after pictures of the trash that was in your neighborhood.
Yeah, they did a good job of cleaning it up.
Pretty bad, and they have it now cleaned up real well. So, I thank our code enforcement people for doing that. The PCA will adhere to all the codes that everybody else has to adhere to.
Thank you.
So, we will make sure that our code enforcement people will be enforcing that. So, once again, thank you for being here with us, and we have the council here that's standing behind you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have petitions and communications, board and planning and zoning's appeal, recommendation to annex and zone property located at 187 South Davis Road.
Mr. West will give that report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. West.
I'm Mr. North.
Just don't call me late for dinner, that's all. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we discussed at work session today, this morning, yesterday, our board of planning and zoning appeal unanimously recommended that roughly one acre of property located at 187 South Davis Road be annexed into the city and rezone as quarter mixed use. The action for you tonight would be to call for a public hearing to be held on May the 9th.
Call for both here. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foes by the same sign, it passes unanimously. All right, city council members report. Anyone have a report tonight?
Yeah. Um, I just want to get through just one month without somebody being killed. And it's difficult because it's like, you're asking yourself, "What can I do as an individual to make this happen?" As an individual, I can't do anything. But as a councilman, I know what must be done. I want everyone to know that I've contacted the NAACP and made them aware that stronger enforcement is going to be needed across the city. And as a result, it's going to, I think, give the appearance that it may be picking on black folks. But all these people that are being killed are black. The average age of death is 21.3 years of age in Troup County due to homicide. These figures are unacceptable. This conduct is unacceptable. And I fear, and I take no pleasure in it, that I will have to support stronger enforcement. Now, what does that mean? That means that some people are going to be locked up, and they're going to say they don't deserve to be locked up. And I dig it. I totally dig it. But as a community, what are we to do? We can't have anarchy across the community. People want to feel safe in their own abode. And I support that. Now, here goes the other side of my report. This is a culmination of many things that have happened. Lack of services, neglect, you name it. There are a lot of issues out there with these programs. I've got a recreational facility that only keeps business hours. Heck, they keep bankers' hours. Nobody is operating on bankers' hours when it comes to getting in trouble, okay? Unfortunately, we as the city council have no control over the recreational facility or their hours. That is your county representatives that are doing that. I implore you to reach out to them and ask that they have a community-centered, based rec program that reflects the needs of the community and not their own agenda. It is time that we come together as government agencies to serve the community. I didn't get up here to serve myself, and neither did any of these gentlemen up here. Nobody's doing this for their own well-being. We got up here to serve you. But if I have a county government that is not even thinking about you, then I'm going to call that out. I implore all of you to get in contact with your county commissioners and let them know you need more proactive hours that serve the community in which it resides. Thank you, that is all for my report.
I'd like to tag on a little bit, because I agree with Councilman Gaskin that it's going, we're going to have to get this thing from all different angles. I would ask too, is there anything we can do to convey our sentiments to Judge Key with the juvenile department? That when we, when our police department catches these kids with guns, that we have got to put, we got to give them some punishment that makes them aware that you can't have guns. There's something that we've got to, there's no excuse for a child under 18 having a pistol. And, I mean, I think, I don't know how else to do it, other than you got to make them understand they can't, they can't have one.
And I appreciate your support, Councilman Mitchell. I don't think that the public is really aware of what happens when a juvenile is arrested because of lack of services, lack of support, lack of YDC space. In less than 24 hours, they're back at home. And this is even after a violent episode. And I don't know if this council has the answers, but we are making the plea that something must be done. 21.3 years of age. Think about that.
I totally agree with both of you, and I know that we're just hiring a new police chief. He has a lot of work that's before him. The community is going to have to work with us, along with the council. We've got to work together because he may have to impose some curfew hours for children that's less than 18. He may have to impose some buyback guns to try to get some guns off the street. All of these things he may have to do, and we're going to have to support our chief in doing so. But also, the public is going to have to support us. Because it doesn't make any sense for these many children, as you said before, to get killed in the streets of our city. We have a wonderful city, and the only way we're going to make it safe, we've got to work together.
I agree.
And some of the parents, some of the parents need some help. I've seen some of the parents just have children that's out of control. And so, I don't want to put the police in everything, but certainly, the police is going to have to do something to counteract all of this crime. So, I think right now, we need to see exactly what our chief is going to do, back in, and try our best to have things in place. As you said before, longer hours for the children to have some recreational activities would probably help, along with other things, the after-school programs that's going on. We've got to all get involved. There's an old African proverb that says it takes a whole village to raise a child. Never shall forget, when I was growing up myself, everyone in our neighborhood could discipline us. And you dare not say anything to your parents because you'll get another one.
That's right.
So, we all have to come together as a community, as a city, to see if we can, exactly if we can help our brothers and our sisters out.
Just one more thing. So, for those of you that are here, please spread the word. I'm bringing the alarm because I fear what's going to happen next. I truly do fear for what's going to happen next. And you can't say that you weren't warned, you can't say that you didn't see it coming, you can't say that it's not earned and deserved. But something has got to be done.
Thank you so much.
I want to add too, and I support the police department 100%, but this in no way gives any of them the authority to, they're going to trick people to respect, they can do their job and do it 100% and still trick people to respect.
We're not encouraging, we're not encouraging.
No, not encouraging. I ain't even got to say nothing, because you read my heart. And all too often, that's what's hap, that is what happens.
I feel confident that you, this is going to be handled appropriately.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you all so much for your comments and your, any other reports? All right, city manager report.
Just a few tonight, Mayor. The financial statements from March, as well as the payment bills over $2,000 are attached to your agenda materials. I don't have any particular comments. I am starting the process of sitting down with each department head to go line by line through their budgets. So, we are looking forward to presenting that to you in May. And finally, this morning at work session, Philip Abbott presented a proposal for the city to request CSX to do a study for silent crossings downtown. The amount of that study is $6,000. We want to look at a couple of intersections there to possibly create a place where the railroad doesn't have to blow as they come through the downtown area. There would be safety measures that have to be put up, and this study would help evaluate what that is and what the potential cost of what that would be. So, this is kind of the first step in that. The council would like to move forward, just need a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foes by the same sign? Ayes have it, and it passes unanimously.
That completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a question about your report.
Yes.
And I know it sounds redundant, I know it sounds funny, but have you found any missing large sums of money?
No, sir.
In any of our budgets?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that. First reading of ordinances, annexing property located at the 1700 block of West Point Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Handley, Lamont Weathers, and located on Vernon Road to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Zoning property located at the 1700 block of West Point Road.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the used zone of real estate to be annexed into the city located on Vernon Road and owned by Handley, Lamont Weathers, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Second reading of ordinances, amending special events ordinance.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the special events ordinance of the city in order to allow temporary alcohol sale locations for approved special events within the downtown development area, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Second?
All in favor, let me know in the same aye?
Aye.
Foes by the same sign? It passes unanimously. Modifying the covenant of restrictions for Southview Annex Cemetery.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the cemetery ordinance, to modify the covenants and restrictions for Southview Annex Cemetery, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date.
Motion approved.
Has the motion approved, second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Foes by the same sign? It passes unanimously. No board and agency appointments tonight?
Do it, do it.
No board and agency appointments tonight? We have closing comments. Katie?
Yes, sir. The good news we'd like to share for tonight is that LPD Officer Bryant Mosely traveled to New Jersey. Get that picture for him. He recently was recognized as the lead officer of the year for the entire state of Georgia. So, the lead, it's the law enforcement against drugs program, that's in the schools. He's actually a counselor, certified counselor, and he's about to be finished with his doctorate. So, we're really proud of Officer Mosely. Also, we want to welcome the mayor, the council, the entire community to join us for our citywide "Leaving LaGrange Better Than We Found It" litter cleanup. It's next Friday, April 21st, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. We close down city hall, all non-essential services for our employees. We pick up litter throughout the city of LaGrange, we lead by example, and it's an annual event we started back in 2000, Meg Kelsey, our city manager, started back in 2018. Everyone's invited. We start at 8 a.m. on Friday, have a short ceremony, and we invite everyone to lunch at Sweetland around 11:30, and then we open back up for business at 1 p.m. So, everyone's invited. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Men, enjoy.